I'm going to reconvene the meeting of the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education if you'd all right. Because I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we're going to start off with a public hearing, but before we do that, I just would like to remind everybody that here for public comment, to make sure that you fill out in the back of the room here, there's a yellow card. It says "Public Comment Card" or something to that effect on it, right back there at the table. So if you would like to speak at public comment tonight, let me fill out the card. So make sure you do that and pass up the suit here in the front. No card, no speech. So make sure you fill out the card, okay? All right, so I want to call to order a public hearing. There will be a public hearing regarding the proposals and plans for expenditures of the deferred maintenance facility funds. Is there anybody here to speak about the deferred maintenance facility funds? See, nobody rushing to the lectern. We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing on deferred maintenance funds. All right, moving on to item F, Adoption and Approval of Agenda. I don't believe I have any changes for it. Number one.
Second.
The move is second to adopt it as is. All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll go on schedule then. Special Recognizations and Presentations. First presentation, Student Representatives. We'll make the presentation of the Student of the Month Awards. Two students from each secondary school in the Petaluma Joint Union High School District for the month of February 2013. So I'm going to make my way up here. And we'll start with our student representatives will come up as I call you. This is the most fun part of the meeting. We get to embarrass all the kids that are here while we compliment them. So let's start with... Let's start with Kennelwood. So would Kennelwood's student representatives come up, please? So the way that this will work is the student representative will introduce the student of the month. Are you the student of the month?
Yeah, they are. Come back.
That's already not on you. I just didn't get out in front of that hooking up, and I apologize. So we'll have them introduce you. You'll come up. And then when you come up, you're going to stand right here and you're going to look right into the camera. It's going to be incredibly awkward. And we all get to YouTube it later on. So stay right here and they're going to read some next up about you, okay? So that's how it's going. Who would you like to start?
Uh, with Natalie Nico.
Natalie Nico. Turn around right there.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Pamela Reynolds and I am the Student Body Vice President at Kennelwood. Kennelwood Junior High School is pleased to introduce the February Student of the Month, Natalie Nico. Natalie is an eighth grade student who has worked hard at Kennelwood to maintain a 4.3 grade point average since seventh grade. Natalie has been a part of our basketball team for the last two years. Natalie's favorite class is math because she is able to absorb information, understand the concept, and she likes having one answer to things. As she finishes high school, Natalie would like to attempt a new course to study subject matter. According to her teachers, Natalie is a very hardworking, she excels in her classroom work and shows a level of maturity, now calmly found a junior high school student. Natalie's work attitude and classroom performance are exceptional, when Natalie is not focusing on her school where she enjoys playing basketball in the class. Natalie says her friends would describe her as intelligent, nice, friendly, and having a good sense of humor. Her parents are proud of her nomination and equally proud of her accomplishments both at Kennelwood and outside of school. Natalie's effort and motivation will make her successful in whatever she chooses to pursue in life. Congratulations Natalie.
We also want to acknowledge that without the help of family and friends Natalie would not be able to do what Natalie's doing. So if you all would step up, those of you who support Natalie. And I also would just like to say, you'll notice on this wall here, all the gold. Pretty soon we'll get you on this little plaque that's going to go right over here on the edge. And it goes all the way back to, I think, nineteen eighty-two, eighty-three. And there's more elsewhere, so. All right, you're next.
Okay, uh, Logan Maxwell.
Logan Maxwell. So, congratulations.
Logan is a delightful student who has maintained a 3.06 grade point average since seventh grade. In his spare time, Logan enjoys fishing for bass and hunting ducks, moose, and deer. Logan sees his class as math because he likes the way the teacher explains the subject matter, which allows him to learn difficult concepts. Logan's teacher describes him as a student who will always give his best effort, is a team player, and is always respectful and polite towards both his students. After high school, Logan would like to attend a university or college to earn a degree in subject matter fielding later. Logan's family and friends describe him as nice, friendly, a good helper, and a hardworking student. Logan's parents are proud of her nomination and equally proud of his accomplishments both at Kennelwood and outside of school. Logan's ability and aptitude will continue to make him successful in school and congratulations Logan.
Logan's family and friends, thank you very much. I want to remind anybody, if you'd like to take pictures, feel free to look your way over here or walk your way over here, whatever you want to do, it's no problem. Skip Petaluma Junior High School.
Hi, I'm Whitney Lloyd and I'm a president at Petaluma Junior High School. We selected Nathan Irwin as the February Student of the Month. An intelligent, hardworking, and productive young man, Nathan has been selected as Petaluma Junior High School Student of the Month for February 2013. Nate is admired among his teachers for adapting so well midsemester to the challenge of a new school. He jumped in, made friends, and has shown outstanding academics. On top of that, he leads by example, asking questions and communicating well. They added that Nate is very responsible, self-motivated, and resourceful, and has an outstanding future ahead of him. Even with a late start after moving here from Sacramento, Nate's success at PJHS has been impressive. Taking accelerated academic program including Algebra I, Nate earned membership this past semester on the principal's honor roll for maintaining a 4.0 GPA. He brained with him experience participating in speech across country in nature bowl competitions at his last school. He's particularly pleased with his nature bowl's team third place finish in statewide environmental protection competition. Outside of school, Nate keeps himself busy playing indoor and outdoor soccer as well as baseball. He enjoys video games, skateboarding, and going to the beach. Besides a passion for playing guitar, he's especially proud to computer science and the world of robotics. With high school approaching, Nate is looking forward to drafting an engineering classes at Petaluma High School with eventual goal of becoming a robotic engineer. Although excited about the future before him, Nate shared this concern when he asked about some important issues facing him this year. The most important problem, I'd say, is the environment. There are many serious environmental problems and they are growing constantly. Each of Nate's parents proudly commented, "We are very proud of Nate. He works very hard to be a successful student. Thank you for recognizing his efforts. Great job Nate." And Nate is organizing and on top of his homework. He knows what he needs to do. He never has to get questions about his board. We are proud of him. He is motivated and is a hardworking kid. Congratulations Nate.
Thanks, Pamela.
We have also selected Phoebe Golden as our February Student of the Month.
Congratulations.
Creative, bright, and highly self-motivated, Phoebe Golden is Petaluma Junior High School Student of the Month for February 2013. Her teachers agree that Phoebe is a wonderful young woman, well-liked by her peers, who does outstanding work and always makes the extra effort. Phoebe's teachers hold her in high regard and note that she is reliable, very hardworking, kind and cooperative, and quietly sets by her example a high bar for achievement in the classroom. Phoebe's success at PJHS this past year and a half has earned her Silver and Gold Run of Social Awards for maintaining a high GPA. Phoebe is finishing off her studies as an eighth grade student in top form after challenging herself this year by taking accelerated curriculum and advanced English and geometry. In addition, she plays clarinet in the PJHS honor band and will be participating on the school track team this year. Phoebe's love of science is reflected in her two-year participation on McNeese Elementary School's science Olympia team, which culminated in a first-place win at the end of the school year's competition. Besides being a top student, Phoebe helps herself keep busy outside of school. She has been a member of the four-H club and still raises chickens. She also makes metal jewelry and enjoys cooking. A current passion for Phoebe is helping her family raise the second guide dog puppy for guide dogs for the blind. Phoebe has clever goals ahead. She plans to keep up her 4.0 GPA and go to a good college. She adds, "I would also like to have a job related to science or math where I can contribute something important to society and the world." When asked about some important issues facing her and her peers, Phoebe responded with, "One of the most important issues right now is the environment. It is being overlooked in favor of businesses and bigger profits. Although all data points to a deteriorating environment, nothing big enough has been done about it." Phoebe's parents are very proud of her and share that she is a great kid. She works hard, enjoys lots of things, and is always willing to try new things. Phoebe is an excellent cook, a reader, a rower, a good friend, helpful, curious, and well-rounded. Congratulations Phoebe.
Phoebe's family. All right, how about Casa Grande?
Hi, my name is Lexi Flotter and I'm the ASB president at Casa Grande this year. And our first student of the month is Daniel Macaral.
Daniel, congratulations.
Thank you.
Daniel Macaral was born in Spain, which means that many of his peers think that he spends his time fighting bowls and winning World Cups. Though he definitely does these things sometimes, he also enjoys playing tennis and soccer and volunteering in the community. He both coaches and reps youth sports, achieving his lifelong desire of yelling at children playing sports. At school, Daniel is always the one frantically pacing around trying to balance five AP classes and is probably the one littering his homework to himself like a madman. He makes sure that he notes everything from the year of the Spanish-American War to the characteristics of Russian symbolism ballets, because he knows these are completely relevant facts that will absolutely be crucial in his future. While he does enjoy learning about a variety of subjects, Daniel is especially interested in mathematics and science. He hopes to study computer science while at college because he enjoys pulling all-nighters and getting frustrated at incompetent computers. He is the head of instruction of the chess club, just to make sure that he fulfills every stereotype of a nerd possible. When he is around friends, Daniel likes to be subtly humorous and make others laugh, and is one of the quickest to laugh. Daniel is very thankful for the opportunities Casa Grande has provided him and is excited to go on to college so that he can further broaden his horizons.
Daniel's family.
Uh, my name is Chris Cole. I'm also a part of Casa Grande leadership. And our second student of the month is Jocelyn Swan.
Congratulations.
Uh, Jocelyn is a senior at Casa Grande. She is ranked ten out of four hundred in her class. She currently holds a 4.8 GPA. And even with numerous advanced placement classes, she managed to keep nothing less than As on her transcripts. She has also done this in spite of facing some significant adversity in her homework. Jocelyn is very active outside of her academics as well. She's been a large part of our varsity cheerleading program for the past three years and helped bring home a second-place trophy in a national competition last year. Now that the season has ended, she's keeping herself very busy with a new job. In the fall, she plans to enroll in a four-year university and major in nutrition. She hopes to go to Cal Poly San Luis Obispo and pay for college in entirety solely with scholarships and grants.
Jocelyn's senior. Petaluma High School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brandon Gardner. I'm ASB president at Petaluma High School. And we are pleased to announce our first February Student of the Month is Caroline Cordova. Caroline has grown up in Petaluma her entire life and attended Valley Vista Elementary School, Petaluma Junior High, and now Petaluma High School. In addition to maintaining over a 4.0 GPA, she has been involved in many extracurricular activities. She is captain of the high school's winter guard and color guard teams and holds a leadership position in the band program. She is co-president of the French Club as well as having been a French tutor. She has been a member of the Circle of Friends, CSF, and the Gay Straight Alliance during high school as well. She has volunteered at Valley Vista Childcare her sophomore year and has now been employed there for two years. Caroline has maintained her grade stuff her senior year and plans to attend a four-year university starting this fall. Thank you Caroline. And Petaluma High's second student of the month is Max Schumacher. Max is a senior at Petaluma High School. He was born and raised in Petaluma and has three younger brothers. Both his parents were also Petaluma High alumni, graduating in nineteen eighty-nine and nineteen ninety-one respectively. Max has always challenged himself academically, enrolling in honors and AP classes since he was a sophomore. He excels in music and is currently playing in the Petaluma High Wind Ensemble and the Varsity Jazz Band. His extracurricular activities include band scouting, filmmaking, and computer programming. He spends his summers volunteering at local youth camps, including Camp Denoyl for eleven-year-old scouts and Camp Casadera for youth musicians. He has been accepted to BYU and plans to attend after his two-year mission for his church. More than anything, Max is known for his positive attitude and his infectious sense of humor, even with all the hardships that have been thrown at him this year, including losing his father a few months ago to cancer. He has continued on with his happy disposition. Max is a friend of all. Thank you, Max.
Max's family. We have one video, but I don't see Noah up here. You know, as I said, this is always the best part of the meeting. Anybody that's paying attention to anything right now knows that education is a very hard business to be in. And while you should all be very proud of yourselves, you should also know that by accomplishing what you accomplish, you inspire other people. You inspire not just other children that are in your class, but you also inspire the people that are here to support you. And that's all the way from the custodian, the bus driver, to the teachers, to the administrators, and even the grizzled board up here. So, thank you all very much. You should be very proud of yourselves. And, um, just keep doing what you're doing. And those that are in the eighth grade, the eighth graders that are here tonight, notice something. Your name will be up here, but I know, because I've been through these lists, that there's not a lot of repeats. So challenge yourself tonight to show up here again in four years. And do that by making sure that you're involved in everything that you possibly can be involved in school. The key component to this and the thing that you keep hearing after every one of these high school students that gets up here is how involved they are in their school and extracurricular activities as well. So make sure that if you want to, set that goal tonight and come back. We'd love to see you in four years. All right? So, let me see what we have here in the text. Okay, we're going to take a real quick break here. I'd love to have all of you stay, but I want to acknowledge that all of you might have something more important that you have to do, like homework. Um, so please don't take this as a shooing you out. We're just going to give you about a hundred and twenty seconds to decide whether you want to stay or not. And then we'll keep going on with a very important, all right? Thank you all very much. All right, I want to remind everybody again, if you'd like to speak at public comment, I need one of these things. So they're in the back. Make sure you fill out. We need a pen. Sure we can find one here somewhere for you? Uh, but I'll use a public comment. We'll be coming up, uh, after, pretty much after this. So we've got minutes to approve and some small things for me, but that's... All right? So, Jason, are you ready to clear the room? All the important people stay.
Yeah, okay, good. Well, pleased to see you all. Um, I am, I'm obviously here to give you a technology committee update. I'm going to try and keep it somewhat brief, so give you the highlights. But my goal is really to hopefully paint a picture, a little bit of where we've been. But the main idea that I want to share with you is what we are hoping, what our vision is for what Casa Grande might look like five years from now. So I have a five-year plan that we've been working on the last two years. I want to get you up to speed and really paint that picture.
This is important, so don't get us the old G and give us the whole thing.
Well, what I would say is that, like, the whole enchilada is really big and it's kind of boring. It's a big old plan.
Use your judgment.
I'm going to, I'm going to forward that to you all so you can look at it as you want. It's a, it's a working draft. It will be done before, probably before April. Um, but you know, it's very, very well already fleshed out, but we'll give you that document. So instead of boring you with like all the nuts and bolts, I thought I'd just give you the main overview. So, starting off, you're very familiar with our mission statement. And I wanted to start with this because as the technology committee has been working the last few years, uh, we've really been focused, especially on that last part of this, about preparing students to be successful for their future education career in community. Really thinking about, uh, if we think about our workplace today and how much it's changed, I mean, we can't even imagine what the workplace for our students is going to be like. And so really trying to think, okay, how do we shift what we're doing? And where do we need to shift so that we can try and get them ready so that they can meet that unexpected future that they're going to face? So, one thing that's kind of, you can barely see this, but, um, one thing that's kind of been in the background or important kind of nexus with our work on this plan is the fact that we're right now moving in... If you do that, they might fall asleep, Steve. Is that right now we're shifting into the Common Core. And I wanted to show just a couple of slides as, by way of overview on that. Is that if you really think about our standards and our educational kind of environments up to this point, like, it might, this might be a good analogy, like a lot of, a lot of ocean to cover, you know, a lot of space. Whereas if we're moving into Common Core, um, we're really looking at shifting away from trying to cover so much ground to really going deep with content. And we've talked a lot about that as well, on how the Common Core is going to be intersecting with the work that we're doing, um, in all levels of our district, including the work in the technology plan. So as we work on our technology plan, we try to match up. We didn't want it to be separate. We didn't want it to be standalone. We really felt like, you know, for this to be more than just some document we write for eBay funding, that it, for it to be something that really helps guide what we do in classrooms and what the experience for students is, it really needs to match our, the district mission, but also all of the board goals and the things we want to do in other areas. So, um, if you're to, if you're to take apart the main parts, the main components of the technology plan, um, there are, in overview, five main parts. So there's a curriculum piece, or what's going to happen in classrooms for kids. There's a professional development piece. And the reason why I have these kind of hanging off the one above it is because the professional development piece is completely dependent on the curriculum. Everything that professional development piece has to support shouldn't be there. If it doesn't support what you want to do with kids. So if you went for training teachers on something that has nothing to do with what you're hoping they'll be able to do with their students. The hardware is the same thing, that, that what we want to do in curriculum for kids and what we want to do for professional development has to, the hardware is only there to support them. If we want wireless in our, in our schools, why? We have to be able to show that there's a reason for students and for teachers to do their job better and to learn better in order to justify those kind of purchases. Looking at the budget, the budget needs to, needs to pay for all this stuff. And then monitoring, how do we see if what we're doing is actually happening and if it's making a difference? So those are the main components of this. If, if we look at the heart of the plan, the heart of the plan is the curriculum. I mean, we're all here for kids. The heart of the plan is what's happening in classrooms with kids. Come on, baby. There we go. So just quickly, looking back at our technology committee, we, as I mentioned, we mentioned, we've met for the last two years. We began last year looking at Horizon Technologies. What is really coming up? What is, what do you kind of the, the big thinkers think? Here's what's happening a couple of years out. Here's what's happening five years out. And here's maybe the big ideas that are happening ten years out. And we, we talked a lot about that and what that impact might be. And then probably the most important thing that we did all of last year is that we visited classrooms in our district. Because we have, we get, if you were at our technology meeting, you'll see representative, we have what, maybe what, thirty? And we've got a good size group, but you know, twenty-five, thirty people in that room, right? And they're from a variety of schools. And they're all talking about what they do in their classroom, what they do at their school. Without any idea of what's happening in our district. And we're supposed to be a committee that's planning for our district. So that was probably the most important thing we did is we chose a day. And we went out in, in, in teams that were, you know, really mixed, that had elementary, middle, and high school, had teachers and support staff and different amounts of people that went and visited classrooms randomly, at all the different, at all the different levels. Elementary, middle, um, high school, alternative, and, and we came back and thought, wow. This is a little bit different than we thought. And it gave us kind of a nice snapshot of what, certainly wasn't a complete picture, but it gave us a good flavor for what is actually happening in our district. And then we, we've talked a lot and discussed articles and videos about teaching and learning. But the very, well, the biggest thing was at the beginning of this year, we moved into trying to articulate, okay, what do we see as a vision for where we would want our classrooms to be in five years? What should the experience be for a student and a family at Petaluma City Schools five years from now? Um, and then talking about how do we get there? So, now moving into that part, what do we hope that that would look like? So, they are familiar with the new, the four Cs, the new board. One of the new board goals, the four Cs, you've talked a lot about that, I'm guessing. So, what our very first goal for the technology plan ties in with those board goals that, um, that we'll see more of that. So our, this one is that we'll see fifty percent more Cs. And we'll see the four Cs in action in classrooms. That means students engaged in communicating with each other, collaborating with each other, um, thinking critically about, about real-world problems, tough problems, and being able to think creatively or express their work creatively. That we would see that fifty percent more than we're seeing it right now. Because when we visited, we didn't see a lot of it. I mean, if we're being really honest, we did, when we looked at what we asked students to do in our district, we saw it in places, it is happening. But it, that wasn't the predominant thing, experience of a kid in their day. You know, just by randomly walking through classrooms. And so we thought, okay, good. We know that that's an area for us to grow. That's what we hope would happen. We have a plan to figure out what that baseline is and how to measure that and to start with professional development to help us as a district move to giving kids more of those experiences. The, uh, the other thing is that not only are we working on, we want to define what are the important technology skills that kids need to know, and more importantly, since we're in this information age, the information literacy skills that help them to understand how to navigate information, analyze it, evaluate it, what to do with it. How do we cite information, not plagiarize, all of those things, which are such a critical, important skill for our kids. We, we're working on, and we, we have a very good draft of that, articulating what those standards will be at each grade level, and then working to help our teachers get our students so that at least by, at the end of five years, we hope that seventy-five percent of all students in all grade levels will be proficient in those standards of their grade level. So classroom environments. This wasn't taken recently, in one of our classrooms. But, um, you know, we talked a lot about, about, and thought a lot about, well, how different are our classes today than they were? I didn't even know when this was. I think it was fifty-two or something.
I think it was in the next one.
You are? Yeah. So, did anyone have a date on that? Yeah, it's certainly fifty. So, um, so many of our classes don't look like this. Although, although in some places it might not be, it might look more similar than you probably think it should be different. You know what I mean? It wasn't that long ago that this was the dominant... It wasn't that long ago that this was the dominant technology, like, oh my goodness, I found an overhead projector. The other piece that we want to have in five years from now is we want to have guaranteed equitable learning experiences. And what, what we mean by that is that, is that, is that it shouldn't be that a student, um, that a student is in, gets to see videos uh, about what they're learning about, or interact and engage in different ways, or have an interactive whiteboard, or have the teacher being able to use document cameras, or students be able to, um, do use other technologies, or student response systems, or all those many things. It shouldn't be that that's by chance whether students get to do that or not, whether their teacher is, is comfortable with it, or whether they take an initiative and where to make rent for that. That's not equity. And so we really, we, we thought about what should a modern learning environment be? If we think about our learning environments in our district, what would a modern learning environment look like? That would help equip our students to be prepared for their future. And if we can define that, how do we start moving towards bringing all of our difference in schools and learning environments into line? So that if we say, this is what an English class in seventh grade should look like, that kids in all seventh grade English classes have a similar environment to learn in, because that shouldn't be left to chance. So that's the, that's another thing we hope for in five years. Grade books. So this is, this is a grade book off of my study. You know, I think this works. What we hope for five years from now is that, is that teachers will be using the technology that we have in place, that all teachers at all sites in all grade levels will be ready, trained, able to use this technology to keep their grading more efficient and effective so that they can support students in what they need. And this also connects to another, another piece I'm gonna talk about in a minute. But this is one of the goals, is moving from an old model to leveraging the technology that we have to make ourselves more efficient in the way we use data about student life. So the last section of the curriculum plan is about communicating two ways between school and home. So, um, obviously I've picked our, our website, um, just because I, I knew the address. But, but just as a visual for you, but not that this is a model necessarily, but that, that our goal is that all schools will have current, up-to-date websites that they're using. That, that they're keeping things, um, active, that they're, that the information is fresh for parents so that they know what, that they know where to go and that, that information is accurate. Um, and then, also, this is a lot of the parent portal. I don't know what's behind it because I've never been past it. But we hope that by the end of five years, 75% of our parents will be able to report. I, I visited the parent portal at least once a semester. At least once, we hope a lot more, obviously. But, but if we can do that, that's why that grading piece before is so important, because that helps the communication as well. That helps people, parents and, and a junior high to know, oh my gosh, why did my child miss? I'm sorry, now I'm using my personal experiences. Why did my child miss that assignment the other day? Um, you know, that, that information can be closed, that, that we can have tighter communication between home and school so that we can support our kids. And, oh. And then we'll feel like this all, I had to put an inspirational picture. So. So those are, those are kind of the main, the main highlights of the vision that we see for, for our classrooms in five years from now. Did you guys have any questions?
First of all, does it, does it hurt to start phasing in, I have like three comments. One would be, when Sharon and I visit sites, the common refrain we hear is, um, spotty Wi-Fi. That just having Wi-Fi so that when the second part comes in where you start doing professional development, it's theirs to, to at least support that. So you start it in steps. So before it gets like integrated into classroom, you're looking at the, at the elementary school. And before we go the next step and maybe teach AP with a college professor from, you know, across the state of California at 10 o'clock uh, in the morning, giving the math AP to all of our students. Before we get to that point, I mean, it just seems like that's a basic, that, that was the first issue, if you guys isolated that. Second one was, to your equity. We could have everybody in the classroom log on app, okay? But what I'm seeing is some students, by virtue of who their parents are, their disposable income, can have the Apple, can have the iPad, can have the iPhone 5, all linked up. Other students don't have any of that. The 50s model, it's really easy to give you a textbook, or you can check an oval library. Did you guys think about trying to address that? Cause I, that's, that's the part that's always puzzling me, is how we're gonna get there, because that's a lot of money. Just the outfit I gave you, the iPhone, that, that would be about a $3,000 package.
Yeah.
If, and I'm being conservative.
Yes.
So, I didn't know if you guys addressed that. I mean, almost like, do we have libraries where people can come in and check in with all?
Solve that problem.
Okay.
They're not, not really.
Yeah. I'm looking behind you for the rich guy.
No, no, that's something, yeah, those are key, key issues that we discuss a lot. We discussed both of those issues. Um, I mean, that, that gap, part of the, one of the issues on that equity piece, not only about the classroom learning environments, but another piece that we're also addressing as a side piece of that is, is extending hours of access for students that need extended hours? And how do we do that? So that's another piece that we're also working on and looking at, because that's an important piece as well. Yeah, there, those are real problems. The, the Wi-Fi one, I mean, Wi-Fi is an interesting example, so I think everyone, it's, it's becoming so apparent to everyone in all areas of our culture and life, how, how important that is and integral to what kind of the work that we do nowadays. So that's one that's gonna be, I think a lot of schools are gonna be coming up on more quickly. In general though, I think there, the, the hardware has to lead a little bit. Like you need the stuff in place to be able to do it. You can't train somebody, here's how you use this tool that you don't have it yet.
Yeah.
So it needs to lead by a little bit, but it, but it, you also, if you lead too far, by the time they're actually ready to use that, you're ready to replace it. Yeah, so, so it's, that's, that's another discussion that we have, we've had at our meetings a lot. We've really been thinking about how we do that. It does need to lead by a little bit, but, but there's, there's like a sweet spot, I think, of, of how much lead that you need.
And then the third one is, whether you wrestle with it or not, and I just see this with my own children, my youngest is, is now 15, but I've watched from the evolution of my oldest, who's 23, so in eight years, how constant they are wired in. And so I'm wondering in, in schools, if, you know, part of that training is to unplug them. But if math, English, history, everything is just wired in, wired in, wired in, do we build, we've gotta find a way, I think, to build in some unplugging. One-on-one, I just get to know you, I don't have to text you, I actually talk to you and look at you and watch your eyes blink. And, and maybe read some things about you, hey, that guy seems like he's really happy or really pissed or whatever. Uh, you know what I'm saying? I, I think, I just wondered, did you guys look into that, or is it strictly just technology and that's what we're gonna focus on?
No, it's absolutely not just technology. I mean, I think, I think probably if you polled the committee, they'd probably be, they'd probably remark about how, how a lot of our discussion has extended beyond just technology. I mean, when we went and visited classrooms, some of the, we were looking at that point at, we hadn't really as a district adopted the four Cs. We were looking at what's happening in, in the, through the lens of Bloom's taxonomy and levels of, of thinking. And some of the best examples of higher order thinking that we were asking our kids to do in our classrooms had no technology at all. So a lot of our conversation is not necessarily about the things, but it's about the way we're asking kids to work and learn. And I think we have a lot of conversations about how, I mean, as adults, we're pretty plugged in, right? We all have, we all have our technology and we're, you know, so I think we've been talking a lot about how do we try and bring, bring our educational environments in, in the way we teach and learn in line with the way that people live their lives and do their work nowadays.
The other thing that we're, we're, it's funny because the committees are kind of all beginning to merge. And, um, K-12 and technology are actually kind of starting to talk about a day together instead of separately. Um, K-12 met today, and one of the things that we talked about there is technology had given us a rubric to look at on the four Cs. And somebody said, you know, this is so funny that technology gave this to us because it doesn't say technology on here. Because it was about the four Cs, the collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and creativity. The technology is a tool, and when it is appropriate, we will use it. But when it's not appropriate, and it's not always going to be the best tool. Sometimes kids need to talk to each other. In fact, a lot of times they need to talk to each other. Then that tool will take a backseat and will be used only when appropriate.
Okay, that was just my point, technology for technology's sake.
And actually, we've had really direct conversations about that. If, if that technology doesn't make the learning better, then there's really no, no need to use it. I mean, anything we add should be increasing the value of that educational experience.
Okay, thanks, Jason.
You bet.
And that, what I was gonna say was that when you don't separate it out, that's when it is more effective. And as a parent, um, you know, there is the issue of having unplugged kids. But there's also the access and the communication that parents gain from having access to grades or just being able to check and see where things are. Because some students are more communicative with their parents than others, and some teachers, and, um, and some parents are totally not connected at all to what their kids are doing. And we need to encourage them to, to be more connected. But, um, there would be a much simpler, uh, support system for those parents and teachers who, and hopefully all of them will have access to, to information that can not allow problems to build and grow. Because that's, when, when we lose time with kids who, I mean, just a little thing could turn around a semester for, for a kid. But I'm thinking high school, um, you know, when those are a little bit more critical towards actually graduating. But, yeah, just to, there's just so much time lost with lack of communication. And if technology can enhance that, the sooner the better.
And to that point, one of the goals that I did share, because we're still kind of working on it, is that we're all, the last goal in that communication area is we're working on how do we work in a target for increasing, so far it's worded something like increasing parent satisfaction with this, with, with our response time back to parents. You know, because it's two-way communication, so you know, are we, are we doing better about getting back to parents when they have a question for us? Or when they leave us a voicemail or an email? So that's a goal that we're working on as well, which will help hopefully shorten that, that time gap between communication between home and school.
I think that's one of the most important things that I know that we hear about, and I know that Steve and Steve Staff hears about, is that piece. The communication piece. Less about iPads in the classroom, or whether somebody is able to access a certain site from a certain place, but it's the email response time. But most interestingly to me, we have almost 1,000 employees, 100 or two change. We have 7,500 students from, from our, between 7,500 and 8,000, depending upon the day I close. We're never gonna be cutting edge, just because of who we are. No public education institution is gonna be cutting edge in the electronic services that we deliver. But to me, the more important piece is that there's some overriding consistency amongst sites. Uh, and, and so that everybody's sort of on the same page, you showed Ares up there, and that is a great goal to get Ares actually utilized. We've been paying for it for many, many, many years.
We're moving towards the parent portal and.
But even on, and Russ, in a very long-linded way, trying to get to my actual sort of question here, um, is what obstacles are you seeing that are internal to the committee being successful delivering the services that you just talked about?
You want me to have the one in this room? I, I don't know, I don't know that there's obstacles yet. You know, because we've, I think that, that, um, that we've, that we spent probably more time, I mean, I, I wasn't here for the first technology plan, but just from reports of the committee, we spent more time. We've, you know, we're, we've gone between committees. Our next step is gonna be going up to sites with that plan. I mean, we're working on the accordion process, we're working on making sure that everyone has input and, and that we're really, you know, we're trying to include everyone. So I mean, I don't know, I don't yet know what the obstacles will be, other than probably the, the usual ones of, of money and time. You know, and, and we don't have more money, we don't have more time. So we're, we're trying to figure out how do we make that work? One of the pieces, that professional development piece, when you look at that plan, I'll send it to you if you look at it. We're really clear about lining up for every goal. We went through, okay, here's a goal, what do we need to give teachers in terms of making this happen? Okay, well, they probably need at least three training, trainings the first year and this many trainings the next year. So we've been really intentional about, about some of those obstacles, which I think are the typical obstacles that might have been in past years. That's probably one of the reasons why things like Ares haven't taken off, is we haven't had, I think, the level of training that we're planning for. So I don't, I think we're trying to anticipate the obstacles. What, if I were to guess what they will be, I, I think that those will be them. The money and time and how that affects whether we can get, you know, whether we can get the hardware we need in place and whether we can allow for and pay for in terms of man-hours and, and professional, the professional development that we need.
Well, let me ask it maybe in a more specific way than, I fear, the fear of change. And I think in order for anything to work in this district, and especially the technology piece, we all have to be on the same page. We all have to be able, we all have to use the same email, which we finally are now doing. Basically, we all have the same email address, so it's not yah.com, AOL, and whatever else. What do you see in the two years that you've been doing this? What's your assessment of the, of the willingness to adapt technology to somebody who's been teaching for 30 years and doesn't, is concerned about how that's gonna affect what they do? In other words, this is my ground book, and I've used that grade book with Victor and everybody else.
I understand, yeah, I do understand your question. And, um, I mean, we all know, I mean, change is hard, it's uncomfortable.
But I'm interested in what's on the ground. You've been talking.
So I, I mean, what I can say is I anticipate that there'll be, there'll be, there'll be difficulties and there'll be struggles, and there'll be people that really are gonna resist change, um, which is why we're trying to make sure we have enough professional development to help people through that. I can, and I can, the people that I've interacted with on this are the technology committee, which are, you know, they're on the technology committee. And the people at my site. And what I can say, you know, McNear, when I first came here, um, we, we were a very veteran site. And we have some more new teachers now. We've been, we were a little bit more diverse in our ages at this point. But when I came on, we had a, a very, a very senior staff. And, you know, the very first year, we put interactive whiteboards in the middle of every classroom. We put them right in the middle so that you have to use them, because we didn't want kids to use it or not because the teacher liked it or didn't. And what we've seen is as we've been providing support, trying to provide as much support and training as we can, teachers that, that are reluctant, it's not that they don't want to, it's that they are worried about being successful with it. They're worried about, you know, being in front of 30 kids and having your class fall apart because it doesn't work. I think my, my long-winded answer is that I think that.
You have a long question.
Well, I think, I think from my experience with McNear, if it's, if it's any indicator of the rest of the district, I mean, I have a lot of teachers that, that were really, are still concerned about technology, but are doing it, they're moving forward. You know, I have a teacher that said he doesn't know how to email, but he was gonna try and figure out how to do it. And he since then has emailed his parents every week, you know, every Sunday, he sends out an email. So I mean, if they teach, I think if we give the support, our teachers want, they're, they're professional, they wanna do what's, what's best for kids. I think that it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we give them the support and, and that they understand the benefits of it. It's gonna be hard, but I think we can get through that, if, if my experience is that McNear is any indication.
I'd like to, to point out that it also is incumbent upon us to communicate and have the parents involved, because it makes it easier for teachers if the parents are responsive. If, you know, sometimes teachers are trying to communicate with parents and they don't always call them back. But if there is a, you know, not only professional development for teachers, but some sort of a development for parents that, you know, teaches them what, what's available to them, so that it, it, everybody works towards the same goal together. I think that's, that needs to be a part of.
I agree.
Of that, the, the process, because it doesn't help the teachers if they're not getting any feedback from parents.
And I didn't mean to put you on the spot like that. I think this board, speaking for myself, but I, I think I'm probably speaking for most of my law, are very, very supportive of any way that we can increase technology to better deliver the services of this district. But at the same time, understand that it can be a complete money pit if it's not properly managed or expectations are, are what we think that they aren't. So I tend to be more interested, and I think most everybody else here, your experience. Because you're actually out there knocking on doors and talking to people, so that's, that's good to hear. Extremely important job, because that's gonna be extremely important upon what we do in the next five to 10 years. we do the next five to ten years.
I think so. I think those five goals, to me, they feel that they're, you know, you said we're not like cutting-edge, I mean, we're not like way out on the bleeding edge here. I mean, they were very practical. They were, they were ambitious in the sense that we want to have it widespread, but there's things that we're trying to do. You know, and so, I mean, I think that it is, it is, that the, the committee's taken a good approach to how, to how we support what we're doing.
Well, thank you very much for being a big part of that. Anybody else have any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we wanted to item H, which is approval of the minutes. I just had one small name.
Show me how to hook up this computer.
Which really is not in any relationship with relevant. Just talk about the next regular meeting and the annual organization meeting already.
There's the old cycle.
Yeah.
What's that?
Oh, it's just, it's, it's the next regular meeting and the annual organization meeting. The goals from before that. We call them goals, I don't know if you call them. And the fact, I thought it was a test, if you were actually testing. I read it. So I just wanted, in seven years, I got one. All right. So thank you all for your patience, we're gonna move to public comment. Let's, first of all, do I have any more cards? One more? Great, okay. And the only reason I'm hammering you on the card is because it affects how we allocate the time available to speak. Thank you very much.
Troy?
Yeah.
Didn't you want to prove your minutes? Because we got the.
Oh, did I not do that?
Yeah, you jumped over.
You moved.
As amended.
All those are fair. Thank you very much. Mike, that is why you're my attorney.
Attorney's bill, clerk's doubt.
All right, comments to the public, thank you very much, I appreciate it. So I have five cards. So let's have a little, just sort of logistical discussion about comments from the public and kind of give you just a small amount of background. The comments from the public section of the agenda is specifically for items that are not on the agenda. If they were items on the agenda that we wanted to discuss, we talk about them under the items of the agenda. There is a, and I'm gonna read you this sort of disclaimer, if you will, I hate to use that word, but it's kind of what it is. And it's also on the front, I'm sure everybody read this when you filled your card out. There's a law in California, it's called the Brown Act. And the Brown Act relates to public meetings of governing boards and city councils and things like that. And without getting very technical about it, what it basically says is governing boards can't make decisions about things that aren't on the agenda, because that way nobody else knows about it. We make an agenda, we publish it, I have seventy-two hours ahead of time. Goes on the window, goes out to the Argus Courier, goes on the website, it goes everywhere. So anybody who's interested in any particular item can come and speak to it and feel that they've been heard and they don't get sandbagged, if you will, for a better term, of having something happen in a meeting that was never discussed. Otherwise, you'd have to come to every school board meeting, right? So, this section is for items that are not on the agenda. So, when you read this, and when I read it to you again, you'll see that we wanna hear what you're talking about. We look forward to comments from the public, we get a lot of good comments from the public. But you're not gonna get any action on your comments to the public tonight. Okay? So I don't want, I want everybody's expectation to be properly set. Okay, so I'm gonna read this, and then I want, if you will. We have twenty minutes for any subject and five minutes for each person. We'll talk about that in here as well. I've got five cards, plenty of time to talk about everything that we need to talk about tonight, so. Make sure when you get up here, you speak from the heart, tell us stuff that we don't know, or stuff you wanna make sure that we know. If you hear somebody say something that has been said three times already, you can just simply say, hey, by the way, I completely agree with what that person said. But we wanna hear everything that you have to say. So, my disclaimer, and I'll come up with a better name for it. Under Government Code, Section 54954 dot 3A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, provided it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. According to the Board Policy BP 9323, each speaker is allocated a total of five minutes to address the board for a maximum of twenty minutes on each subject matter. While the above referenced Government Code allows speakers to criticize districts' policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a current policy BP AR 1312, specific to complaints against employees. If comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employees immediately supervised for investigation. The board does not take action or discuss items not appearing on the agenda. The board values, and this is important, because it's actually true, values public comment and wishes to convey that all those board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda. We listen carefully and we appreciate and value everything that you have to tell us. Okay? I have five cards, I believe they're all about the same thing. Is there one person here that wants to take lead, if you will? Have you all talked amongst yourselves, or should I just roll you up?
I guess we could all come kind of as a group.
I want you to do it however you wanna do it, okay? So I don't want, if somebody wants to be up there by themselves, however you guys wanna do it, okay? All right. So, because everything that we do here is public, when you, before we start, in fact, we've got all of you up here, I'll need you to introduce yourself, and then you also need to, and let's just kind of roll call it out, and you also need to give us your comments, okay?
Okay, I'm Lynn McAllister, and I am a Cherry Valley mother of a five-year-old daughter. And my address is 511 East D Street, Petaluma, California, 94952.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Alexis Alexiades, and I am also the mother of a five-year-old kindergartner who attends Cherry Valley. And my address is 12 Pigeon Court, Petaluma, California.
I'm Annis McNotts, and I actually have a first grader at Cherry Valley, a seven-year-old. And I will have a son, I'm going in next year as a kindergartner at Cherry Valley. My address is 625 Albert Way, Petaluma, California.
I'm Sudette Stevens. I have a daughter at Cherry Valley School in second grade, and I have a son who'll be coming in this fall. My address is 806th Street, 94952.
Okay, can I have one more card from Megan? Will you be speaking separately?
Yes, I'm not with the Cherry Valley crew.
Very good. I'm sure they would have you if you'd like. I want you to be happy to.
I'm with the Cherry Valley.
The Cherry Valley, all right, and you'll introduce yourself real quick for us?
I am, I'm Maya Lucas, and my grandson goes to Cherry Valley, and I live at 4695 Pepperwood Drive in Pangrove.
Very good.
So I guess, I guess, to start, or, okay.
It's all you.
Okay, so we are here to continue the dialogue that has been started by teachers and parents of the community about whether changing the kindergarten hours are appropriate for our children and our teachers and just our community. And a majority of the people that I have talked to are opposed to it. Today, I have the privilege of turning in the beginning petitions that are going around. Many of them, one was written by Alexis and other people in the community. And we want you to know that many letters and public comments to the superintendent, Mr. Bowman, have been sent, and that we would just like you to continue to keep this subject, sorry, in, in your mind. And when you, when you think about the subject, we want you to not think about a group of children as a whole, but to look at them as individuals. Because many children, if you look at them in the whole, you might think that it's a, a good idea for the masses. But if you start to look about, at the children as individuals, there are children with learning disabilities, there is children who have behavioral issues, there's children who just can't sit still, there's many different children that we can have to consider when we're making this decision. And, and so, myself as a Cherry Valley mom, I have a five-year-old daughter, and she turned five, two days before she started kindergarten, which was at Cherry Valley in the year round, so she starts in July. So she was actually a very young five-year-old, and I just feel had Cherry Valley and/or some of the other Petaluma City School kindergarten options, been full day, that I wouldn't have chosen it. I might have perhaps chosen to keep her out a year, or chose another option. In addition, we go to Cherry Valley and we have the option to have a kindergarten first grade option, where we have ten kindergartners and ten first graders. And so the kindergartners and the first graders interact together and they learn from each other. And in the afternoons, the first graders have the option of only being ten. And I feel this really benefits their learning skills and assures their success, because they get the individual one-on-one time. And I'm not sure if a multi-age kindergarten class, a full day of kindergartner, kindergartner and a full day of first grade, how that would affect their learning process, because kindergartners and first graders are on very different pages. And so I was really looking forward to having Violet have that individual time as a parent, not to kind of stick up for her. Yeah, and, you know, just keep it in your minds that, you know, there's many members of the community who are concerned about this subject.
And I am one of them. I, my daughter is, she's so bright and fun and happy and engaged, and she loves her class and her teacher. And when I pick her up at 11:45, she's so tired. And I just couldn't imagine her having a full day. I don't think she would, I don't think she would do well with a full day. She tends to, you know, she's, she gets tired and then she's emotional and, you know, things fall apart, and I just am envisioning, how would this work? You know, I, I know they do it in other districts, and I know it works for a lot of kids, and I think that's great, but I think I would like to have a choice, I would like to have the option, you know. Well, and now my daughter's, she's gonna move on to first grade, so I'm with Lynn, I wanna have that, that small ratio, but I have a younger daughter who's gonna go into kindergarten at some point soon, before I know it. And I just wanna have that choice, you know, maybe she'll be ready for it, maybe she won't. But if I don't have the choice, I don't know that I would wanna do that. And I know there are a lot of parents who feel that way as well, and, you know, petitions are circulating, and, you know, I just really want you to hear that, because it's so important to me. Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate you taking the time for that.
Well, obviously, I'm a Cherry Valley parent too, and I feel the same way. I feel like choice is a big thing. I mean, I feel like for my children, I'm a parent, and I want them to have choices and I want me to have, be able to have good choices for them. And my daughter went through the kindergarten program, and I feel the same way, like I couldn't imagine her having to go all day when it was time for her to get out of school at 11:45. She was ready, she was ready just to be a kid after that, if she just, you know, wanted to play in the yard or dig in the dirt or just rest a little bit. And now I see her as a first grader, and that time that she has in the afternoon when there's just ten kids with the teacher, how much she's blossomed and how much she loves school. And I just feel like kids should come home loving school. I don't think we should put so much pressure on them, there's so much pressure these days, and at a young age to like have to sit there all day long and come home so tired at five years old and feel like school already is draining you? I think what is that in the long run, you know? I mean, I want my daughter, she has years to go, I want her to go to fifth grade in one school, junior high, you know, I want that passion. But if we're trying to have all these standards and taking that away from them, not letting them enjoy it and have a process and a, I don't know, I feel we're gonna burn out our children. And sometimes I feel we should, we need to look at everything and that. I mean, I'm a working parent, in a way, it could make it easier for me if my kid was in school all day, I wouldn't have to pay for daycare if I had to, or, you know, my parents, but I feel for myself, it's better for my child to not, I mean, it's hard for him to sit. I help in the classroom too, and I see those kindergartners, I couldn't imagine them having to go till 2:30. They're ready, so I just feel like we should be able to have a choice, and that all our choices shouldn't be taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ditto, no.
Sorry?
Another Cherry Valley parent, and I just wanted to give a little snapshot about my background. I, I have a PhD, and so I just would like you to know, my audience, that I value education just as much as the next person, you know, I took it as far as I could. But I also value downtime. I think that's very important for children, and what I see in my own children is when they come home from school, of course, they're tired. I should say my daughter, my son's actually not in school right now, but she's tired. And, and I know there's research that states that it's that downtime where kids actually process an awful lot. You know, they, they see and experience a lot of things at school, but it's when they're able to just vegetate, if you will, you know, we, I think we used to call it vegetating, and now we realize that there's a lot going on in those brains during that time when they're able to play and rest and just sort of reflect on the day that they've had. Another thing that we know is that first impressions are really important. My son went to school briefly when he was two, it was a parent co-op preschool locally, so it was with mom. And he had a wonderful first impression of school, but for a variety of reasons, we decided not to go to that school anymore. And so, almost three years will have passed by the time he's entering kindergarten this fall. And so it'll be yet another first impression for him. And I want that first impression to be phenomenal, actually, you know, it's the basis for the next several years of his life, at least twelve, if not more, for him to continue. And I don't want him to be fatigued. And, well, that brings me to my next point, my third point, is that I believe there's an association with, a negative association between fatigue and enthusiasm, you know? And I want him to be bright and ready to go to school each morning and not still fatigued from, from the day prior to that. When my son starts school, he'll actually still be four, he'll turn five on August 5th, so he'll be a pretty young kindergartner. And he still has downtime in the afternoon. You know, he's a very active little boy, so sometimes he, he doesn't, but he still takes the occasional nap, it's usually around one o'clock, and if he doesn't nap, he, we often just lie down together for an hour in bed and read books. And I can't imagine how that could play itself out in school. You know, I, I can't imagine him having that kind of downtime that he would need. Let me see. I guess my final point is also that, you know, I think quality of education is extremely important, I think that's why we're all here. But I do think that there's a bit of a, probably a diminishing return throughout the afternoon for kids, especially young ones who get very tired. And so I just would like everyone to question the value of that additional time for children, especially very young children. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I am a retired teacher, and I think my picture is in that black and white fifty's school room. I think I saw myself.
We all saw ourselves.
But I just wanted to say, one of the main reasons that my daughter picked Cherry, Cherry Valley was because of the K-1 combo class and being with a teacher for two years, and then having, moving into first grade and having the smaller classroom size. My concern, if this should go through, would be, the word grumpy comes to mind. I think the kids would be grumpy, I think the teachers would be very grumpy. I think the stress level would rise with the children and with the teachers. And I just hope that common sense prevails.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Megan Attia, and I live at 522 Amber Way.
Thank you very much.
I feel very similar to these women here that have talked about the issue. I'm a new parent, my daughter will be starting kindergarten this year, this fall, and I'm sort of at the information gathering stage. My husband and I have visited numerous schools to, you know, speak with the teachers and understand a little bit more about what to expect, and, you know, I only learned about this because one of the principals happened to mention it in passing. You know, no, no other school principal or teacher even told us that this was under consideration. So, for me, as part of this information gathering process, it's been difficult for me to really ascertain what the reasoning is behind it. I've asked different people, and some say it's this new curriculum, others say it's, you know, class sizes, and so I'm having a hard time understanding what the reasons are for us considering this move, and then again, of course, what the pros and cons are. And I attended the last. And I attended the last board meeting, and I was actually surprised to hear the teachers saying that they weren't even, a lot of them weren't even aware this was in consideration, which to me, it seems like they would be one of the first people you would want to bring into the discussion because they're kind of on the front lines, and really understanding what, how that would impact the kids, how, how the curriculum changes, and all of those things. So I was actually impressed to see how much research and discussion you guys have been having about the technology and how we incorporate that into the classroom. And I'm just hoping that those similar discussions are happening around this issue because from a public parent perspective, it's kind of feels a little bit like it's all happening behind closed doors. And then at some point, you're going to come out with a decision and just tell us what it is, and then that's going to be the end of it. So I think that's where you see us continuing to want to make ourselves heard and have a presence at these meetings to ensure that our voices are being heard and that all of these things are being, are part of the discussions that you're having with regards to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to refer you over here to Jane, for any more information that you may want to gather as you research this and kind of come to your own conclusions. Jane will be a good source for you.
Okay, thank you.
How do we get a hold? Do we call?
Very good. I want to thank you all very much for hanging out through some other things to come down and speak to. It is very valuable. It really is. And we take a renewed set of the time, all right? I'll give you a thirty-second break if you want to hit the road. Don't normally do that, but. We're going to come back in a session with Item J, which is the recorded activities corresponding to school board members. The TLT, tomorrow's leaders today, Government Day, the North Coast Section Basketball Games. And as Mike has been doing this year, Nazi, and a very nice job, by the way. I had a chance to compliment you, but always a pleasure to go in the gym and hear you announcing the North Coast Section Athletic Games. So that would be Item J. Moving on to K, the consent agenda, a consolidated motion. I didn't have anything polled or moved around, so I'll take a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Passed. Under administration, these are the hold items, human resources. Item two is a hold item. The official, as compared with, I guess, the non-official ballot, but the official, 2013 Delegate Assembly Ballot, recommend a motion that the board vote and report on the original CSBA ballot the selection of one CSBA Delegate Assembly Member for Region 3A.
I make a motion to vote for one A.
Go here, second?
Second.
Okay, maybe just a short discussion. Is there any particular reason, since I know neither of these two people?
I don't know them either, but in reading what they had to say, I, the communication on his application was a little clearer to me. And he's also been doing it for a while, so he's, he's got experience, and he doesn't have, no learning to learn.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments in regard to that? A little more discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Close? Was it Ron?
Ron.
Ron's our guy?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's move over to Business Services, Item Five, some hold item revised. Deferred Maintenance Program for 2012, 2013, the recommended motion that the Deferred Maintenance Budget for 2012, 2013, Deferred Maintenance Work Program be approved, and the superintendent be authorized to call for bids on those projects where necessary.
So moved.
Second.
So ideally, we bring the Deferred Maintenance Program to, to the board for approval, and later on, we'll bring the bid items back to the board approved, the actual projects that were going to be completed this time.
I wanted to just say that, just looking over the list, it's really important that we are able to continue to do these things. I know that they're all different budget issues that a lot of people are complaining about. But when you look at the list of the little tiny things, if we didn't do them in the small amounts, it would cost so much more later. So I'm just appreciative that we have this.
Well, we agree.
Steve, is that, is that part of the supplemental B? Is that part of all that?
Supplemental B is the plan, yes.
The only comment I had is, we had, we had that high school issue, and that was in 1415.
We have it indicated in 1415. If we're able to move it forward, anything on the plan we can do, we'll bring back an revised plan next spring if we add something or modify it. But anything on the plan we can do in, in, other than the year indicated.
So we're not wedded to that year?
Yeah, we're able to move forward with the, with the gym floor, we move that forward.
You know, I get that if there's money, but I'm saying it doesn't handicap any of these projects. I just want to make sure, like, oh, we have all the money.
But we have to wait for that year.
Not for 15, 16, and we're in 13, 12, 13.
So Steve, were appropriate something that gives you some flexibility if you have the ability, or potentially the need?
Yeah, anything on the plan can, can be moved forward, and, a lot of items are on the plan in case something comes up, and we need to do it earlier, we will, we'll do it as needed. I mean, if it's not on the plan, we will revise the plan and bring it back, revise the plan back.
So if somebody came racing and drove us and they had a couple hundred thousand, they wanted to give it to you before tax time to do something with?
Yeah, we would move it forward.
We could find a place for it.
Actually, we'd take it off to the remaining, and do it as a grants and donation project.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item Six, Resolution 121319, recommend a motion that Resolution 121319 of the Board of Education of Petaluma City Elementary School District and the County of Sonoma, State of California, authorizing the issuance and sale of its 2013 General Obligation Refunding Bond to be adopted.
Second.
You've been here all night, Nigel. This is your time.
I know. Well, I've enjoyed watching other people do PowerPoint, and scenery. I like their slides, so, yeah. Much more entertaining than mine. This is a refinance of our, just over $2 million of elementary geo-bonds being refunded at a lower interest rate. And so what's, what's great about this is since, since the interest rates have been held down for so long under the Fed rules right now, we will be saving over 10% by doing this refunding. And $250,000 is not representing a lot of money, but 10%, no, 10% is 10%.
A quarter of a million bucks is a lot of money.
I know, and it saves, you know, taxpayers, it saves taxpayers the money, so.
Because you're the one who supports it.
That's right, we like that. That's right.
All those in favor of saving money? Close? All right. Moving on to Item Seven, Hold Item, the Lease Purchase Agreement Authorization, recommend a motion for authorized entering into a lease purchase agreement with Dell Financial Services via Petaluma Education Foundation Grant Funds and site-based parcel tax funds for purchase of computers for Pen Grove Elementary and Grant Elementary Schools.
So moved. So by leasing these computers, rather than buying, being able to buy one-third of these computers each year, the labs are being able to be brought up to date all at once with the same equipment. And so this lease option gives the site, the school sites that ability to do that.
And they're okay with using site funds for the subsequent to leases?
Yes. I mean, and I actually have the sites actually email me what are, what's your plan to pay this out. And so they make that commitment. It'll be documented in the lease documents that I maintain in spreadsheet form, and when you see them on our interim reports.
Do we get more bang for our buck, you think, in leasing? Because with, well, technology, it antiquates so quickly.
Right.
Someone's crazy not to.
So if you didn't do this, you would wind up with a third of the, the computers new, and two-thirds of them being ancient and not on the same software platform, et cetera. So it makes sense for them to be able to, to revamp an entire lab.
And it kind of speaks to your question or concern about equity too, that everybody has.
Yeah. You don't want to hit the short straw and get the old man.
And PEF, PEF grants, you know, have really helped with the sites being able to do this.
Incredible organization. We're lucky to have. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close? I believe that is all of the hold items that I see. Anything on discussion that we would like to discuss? Anybody in favor of policies for trees? Future business, our next meeting's going to be March 12th?
Our next meeting on March 5th.
The next regular meeting.
Yeah, the regular meeting, the special meeting is going to be on March 5th, 6:00 PM, right here. And then the regular meeting will be the 12th, 6:00 PM, right here. I'm not going to read through all the upcoming events.
But I did want to say, what's going to be, it's called, here in the coastline, Project Grad fundraiser thing, isn't that like March 9?
I'm not over that.
It is March 9, yes. So I just wanted to make sure people knew that was coming up.
Do you, where is it?
Isn't it, you say at the Vezz?
At the Vezz Hall.
I just happen to know a certain jazz player.
Oh, really?
Is this going to be playing that evening?
Yes.
That might have swung me right there. That's on the 9th?
Yes. And March 12th is the kindergarten event.
Sounded like an inside joke, which I'm not expecting to start. March 12th, very good. Public action, report taken in closed session according to Government Code 549571.
Some spouses went over to the lobby this night. We'll be wondering why I'm not in the kitchen.
So we had a, we started this meeting off with a closed session relating to some employment issues. And I'm going to read to you the outcomes of that, which are, there are one, two, three, four, five. Resolution 121313, recommend a motion that Resolution 121313 for the Board of Education, Petaluma City Elementary School District, and the Petaluma Joint Union High School District in the matter of the decision not to reelect temporary certificated employees totaling 13.2 FTE or full-time equivalent effective May 31st, 2013, be adopted. That passed on a vote of five to zero. Resolution 121315, recommend a motion, the Resolution 121315 of the Board of Education, Petaluma City Elementary School District, and the Petaluma Joint Union High School District in the matter of the decision to release temporary certificated employees totaling 7.0 FTE effective May 31st, May 31st, 2013, be adopted. That was passed on a vote of five to zero. Resolution 121316, recommend a motion, the Resolution 121316 of the Board of Education, of the Petaluma City Elementary School District, and the Petaluma Joint Union High School District in the matter of the decision not to reelect temporary certificated employees totaling 1.8 FTE effective June 5th, 2013, be adopted, and that was passed on a vote of five to zero. Resolution 121317, recommend a motion, the Resolution 121317 of the Board of Education, Petaluma City Elementary School District, and the Petaluma Joint Union High School District in the matter of the decision not to reelect temporary certificated employees totaling 1.0 FTE effective June 7th, 2013, be adopted. That passed on a vote of five to zero. And finally, in Resolution 121318, recommend a motion, the Resolution 121318 of the Board of Education, of the Petaluma City Elementary School District, and the Petaluma Joint Union High School District in the matter of the decision not to reelect temporary certificated employees totaling 2.4 FTE effective June 30th, 2013, be adopted, and that is well passed, five to zero. That is a report out of all the action in closed session. I'll take a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned for finding about two thirty.